Talk to Barbara Maryland much?
Mm-hmm.
He's turned down that old building.
Tell me, I've never said anything about it.
They started this, they tore all the skin off and then it was windy Tuesday. It was doing this in the wind. So they had to come with like three big pieces of equipment and like.
Shore it up.
Yeah, shore it up.
Was it metal or siding?
Would say. Metal siding but wood.
Alright, it's now six P M on Thursday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission order. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Mister Hankins.
Present.
Mister Jacobson.
Present.
Mister Sims.
Present.
Miss Taylor Jones.
Present.
Mister Arnie.
Present.
Mister Ackley.
Here.
Mister Lassenberg.
Present.
Mister Bennett.
Here.
Mister Perrin.
Here.
Alright, this meeting will be conducted in accordance with Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy which can be found in the back vestibule of this hearing room. Um, at this time, I would just ask all commissioners and all those in the audience to just please silence. Turn off your cell phones, other devices, saying it could disrupt our proceedings, so. Uh, without any interruptions, thank you. Um, at this time, I entertain a motion to revise or approve the planning commission's meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve is written.
Second by Jacobson.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, at this time, I'd accept into the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application.
No updates.
Do we, this is not based with the vote or no?
Yes. Need a motion to. Accept her updates, which were none. Accepting it into the record, there's no additional.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept into record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application as presented.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Alright, next we have the consent agenda. Uh, consent agenda item two A, request to amend section eight dot zero three dot zero six. City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding hard surface parking, the applicant of City of Bellevue. Staff, anything? Okay. Commissioners?
Uh, I'll make a motion for the approval of the amendment as presented.
We need to ask the public if anybody wants to take.
Oh, a pen, oh, sorry.
Is there anybody that was here to speak on that tonight on the hard surface amendments?
What are you looking for? Okay, I'll let you know.
Yeah, we'll get one.
See, I'll let you know.
Alright, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
No, my apologies. Um, I make a motion to, uh, for the approval of the amendment as presented.
Second. All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, that item will go to city council for public hearing on May seventh, twenty twenty four. Alright, next we're gonna get into agenda items three, public hearings. Uh, we have three items for a public hearing this evening. For each, I will announce the case, then ask if there's any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have the opportunity to present their request. After applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony they would like to consider into the record. Uh, those of you that would be testifying, we just ask you, please come forward to the podium. State your name, spell your name, and sign in for the record. Uh, typically, we will do testimony for three minutes, uh, per person. Uh, after any testimony is taken, the applicant shall have the opportunity for rebuttal, after which we'll close the public hearing. And always, we just always ask everybody treat others like they would like to be treated, um, when they're speaking to the public. Alright, three A is a request to approve the redevelopment plan for lots two, four, and five. And outlots A, D, E, and F Cardinal Commons Phase Two. Applicant Excel Development Group. General location, Thirteenth Street and Casper Street. Case number E C D dash six three. Staff, any updates?
No updates, but while the applicant is coming forward and signing in, I can just give a brief summary of the project. Um, this is for an affordable senior housing project near Thirteenth and Casper Street. Uh, it's two phases. Phase one was already approved last year and, uh, they are under construction. They have, um, reported approximately just over ten million dollars in TIF eligible expenses. And the ask, the request for TIF is two hundred and fifty thousand. Staff is supportive of this request. Um, recommending approval based on conformance with the comprehensive plan, elimination of obliterated and substandard area. And conformance with the requirements of the state statutes and the opportunity for infill development with that. I will turn it over to Mister Willis.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, Andrew Willis, uh, two thirty-three South Thirteenth Street in Lincoln, on behalf of the applicant. Um, as mentioned, this is. Might look a little familiar because it's phase two of, uh, the Cardinal Commons Development, a very similar, this is thirteen duplexes, so twenty-six total units. Of affordable housing, uh, fifty-five and older. Um. Again, really, the, the key here is that, um, a ten million plus dollar project, this, this TIF really does. Uh, fill about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar gap in financing, um, that, that really is needed, so. I still have to go through the, the application phase with NIFA, but there, really, I'd say TIF is crucial in two, two aspects. First is. Um, as this goes through the, the competitive scoring phase with NIFA to get the, to get the low income housing tax credits. Um, the extra points by having the TIF approved, um, we think that's gonna get it over, over the top to actually get the app, to get the tax credits. The tax credits and the, and the TIF together really make this project work. Second piece of the, you know, the reasoning is with affordable housing. Uh, with those tax credits, they, they place a land use restriction agreement on the project, which means you can't raise your rents. Um, that's the purpose of the project, so that's a good thing, but it's, uh, means you can't make as much money, which again is. The purpose of, you know, this type of program, but what it, what it means is there's not enough money to, uh, you just can't get enough financing, so financing, uh, you can't. Pay for those development costs upfront, so again, with the TIF to help assist, and again, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help assist with this project, uh, that really does. Um, cover what could otherwise, you know, if it was a market rate, you would just increase the rents, or you would do some other things to make some money, which you just can't do in a, in a low income housing rent restricted project. So it really is pretty crucial to, to make this work. Uh, the goal would be start construction next year. Um, first quarter twenty twenty five, finish up in two thousand twenty six, if everything goes as well, so it's, so it's a little ways out, but again. Getting the TIF approved early really helps with the, with the, uh, tax credit application and, and helping get through that, that, that process as well. Um. Now, as mentioned, this really conforms to the, the comprehensive plan, there's a lot of, a lot of information out there that, um, you know, the need for housing. I would note, one, one other piece of the, the financing in this is, uh, C D, C D B G Disaster Recovery Fund, so again, this is sort of. In response to a, a lot of the losses in the flooding, so it kind of fills that, that gap or that, uh, piece as well, so it really is a pretty, um. Worthwhile, important project that just needs some assistance with the funding, and again, it's phase two, uh, so. It's gonna look a lot like phase one, it's already been through, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
We'll open the public hearing, and then if there's any questions, did you sign in?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing for item three A. Anybody here to speak for or against this item? Alright, not seeing anyone, we're gonna close the public hearing. I'll now turn, uh, it over to the commissioners, commissioners wishes. Questions for the applicant.
Question for the applicant. More of a curiosity, I'm supportive of the plan, as you indicated, this is kind of part two, phase two, which is great to see the development. Uh, cover page of the application talks about. Each duplex having ultimately total assessed value of a million three eighty. When I do the math on that divided by thirteen. I guess I'm just curious, the hundred and six thousand dollar. Assess value that you expect, is that because of the lower restriction?
Yeah, and so there's, there is a specific statute, seventy-seven thirteen thirty-three, for the, for the evaluation of affordable housing. And so it, um, and again, part of that is, it's considered a, I mean, it's, it's a. It's valued by using the income approach based on the actual rent, the rent restricted income, and, and these projects. Have a much higher expense, they just typically have much higher expenses with the compliance necessary and some other pieces, so, uh, so that statute specifically. Uh, values them slightly different than a mark, than a unrestricted project, and so. If, uh, if, and, and we're basing that off the income and expenses in the pro forma, but that's. We think that's where it should end up, and as long as everybody follows the statute, it's pretty, it's, it's just, uh. Actual income, actual expenses, and a cap rate that's set by the, by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, thank you. There's no other questions or comments, I'd be prepared to make a motion. Hearing none. I move that we approve this application for Cardinal Commons two development. Based on conformance with the comprehensive plan, the elimination of obliterated and substandard area, and conformance with the requirements of the state statutes, and the opportunity for infill redevelopment.
Second by Jacobson.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, this item will go to city council for public hearing on April sixth, twenty twenty four, or sorry, sixteenth, not six, sixteen, April sixteenth, yes, sir. Okay, our second public hearing is item three B, request to rezone lot two. Mankies Second Edition from BG to MU for the purpose of a mixed-use development with site plan approval. Applicant Housing Foundation for Sarpy County. General location, two-two-zero-two Pleasant View Lane, case number Z dash two-four-zero-one dash zero-one. Staff, any updates?
No updates. Um, this request is. This, the Housing Foundation for Sarpy County has made a request to rezone this property. What they are desiring to do is a mixed-use building. The proposal is for, um, first level commercial and then three upper levels of multifamily residential. It would have, um, be a twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-four square foot building. Um, just over fifty-three hundred of that would be commercial space, while the remainder would be, um, studio, one bedroom, and two bedroom apartments. Uh, staff has, um, done extensive pre-application meetings with the applicant. Um, our engineers have reviewed it, um, planning, fire, everyone has reviewed it. Um, what you are seeing in front of you is the culmination of those efforts. Um, therefore, staff is recommending approval, and approval would be based on. Conformance with the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, the Fort Crook Road twenty forty plan, as well as lack of perceived negative impact upon the surrounding area. The lots currently zone BG, which is general business. Um, you know, BG could, you know, has any number of permitted uses, which could include twenty-four hour convenience store. Um, could be retail, could be things of that nature. Um, staff's opinion would be that the mixed-use building would actually be, um, less of a negative impact upon. The adjacent single-family residential neighborhood than how it's currently zoned and the permitted uses within that zoning. Um, part of this application is a mixed-use agreement. That'll be finalized at city council, um, currently under review by our city attorney's office. And that will dictate, you know, what can be, um, that'll basically solidify kind of the site plan approval process that comes with a mixed-use zoning designation. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant, if they wanna come forward and, uh, provide any updates.
Good evening, Trevor Vescrana with TD Two Engineering and Surveying, ten eight three six Old Mill Road. Here representing the applicant, um, Housing Foundation for Sarpy County. Um, so as mentioned, the, the property is currently zoned BG, we're seeking a, a rezoning to mixed-use for, um, that mixed-use multifamily apartment building. Um, we kind of reviewed that Fort Crook Road, uh, twenty forty plan. Kind of the general vision of that plan is a, kind of a mixed-use corridor for that Fort Crook Road, and, and we feel that this project kind of would align with that plan. Um, there's twenty-four proposed apartment units, we'll have all parking provided on site. Um, and then in our landscape plan, we'll have some, some screening around those, uh, residential lots there as well. Uh, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we will open the public, uh, hearing. If there's anyone who cares to provide public testimony on this matter, whether in favor or opposition, please come forward, state your name and sign in.
Good evening, my name is Bob Muse, I live at twenty-one oh eight Pleasant View Lane, which is just kitty corner from this lot, pretty much. I don't have any objections to putting something decent in there. But from the way that, uh, sketch there is with all those parking places. That's gonna be a son of a gun, one way in, one way out, and no way to turn nor, to turn south. To go on the highway, so that means they're gonna go run right through our neighborhood. Uh. Yeah. That's.
Alright, thank you. Come on up. Did you sign in?
I haven't.
You have him? Okay. No, that guy?
No, I haven't.
The first guy?
He just signed in.
He did, okay.
Alright, hi guys, I'm, uh, Ryan Meyer, I'm here with my wife Angie, and one, brought another neighbor. Uh. We live at eight oh two North Sixth Street, which, if you look at the map, we've got about fifteen feet, yep, that's the house with the, the pointer. So I've got about fifteen feet, which is about five feet above the property, um, that's considering being built on. Now, a three, four-story property. I, I lose my privacy. The other neighbor to my left, the other two neighbors are losing their privacies, so. The direct neighbors that have residential homes, there's really just three of us. The other tenant has most of the land, I, I believe he's kind of an absentee landlord, I don't know, I'm sure he's a nice man. I don't know if he's here today, I'd love to speak with him, but it's really only affecting three small homes, which is great for you guys, but unfortunately. I'm in one of the small homes that's gonna have a towering building. No matter how, I mean, unless you guys let us build a fence, what, thirty, forty feet tall, that'd be great, if you can. He's not wrong about the, about the, uh, the parking either. One way in, one way out, it's gonna be driving right through our neighborhood. Um, this is way in excess than, than we need. As far as being at BG, and, yeah, sure, a convenience store could be there, a convenience store is not gonna be there, convenience stores are on other spots, a, a gym. Yeah, guess what, a gym is a block down the road. That's not gonna happen, so those cases really aren't real. That's not what's possibly gonna be going in there, so I don't have a problem with the business going in there. Nine to five, right, not a problem, weekends, but I'm really not interested, I'm sure you guys aren't interested. If apartment complex is built right next to your home, and you lose your privacy of your backyard. And I guess bedroom windows, because my master bedroom is right there too, so I'm extremely concerned. My wife is extremely concerned. We also have grandkids, our grandkids play back there. I mean, I, we don't know what type of apartment pon, complex is gonna be built, is this gonna be a, a low income? That's great for low-income people, that's not really great for crime in our area. It's not, it's not great, I, I don't really relish having an apartment complex there. When I'm playing in the back with my grandchildren, having to worry about one more thing in this, this tough world. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wanna speak?
If I may ask one question.
Can you come to the mic, can you come to the microphone? Thank you.
What does that, oh, uh, general. Thing mean, that you want to change it to?
It, it currently is general business. They want to change it to mixed-use, which allows a mix of commercial and residential. Currently, it's, it's a commercial, commercially zoned lot.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Alright, I'm Angie Meyer, I'm, uh, Ryan's wife. Um, he pretty much hit on everything that I thought of, um, yeah, I mean, how long is the building gonna take? Um, the noise from the construction, um, this gentleman made a really good point about traffic, um, because if you go. If you're going west, you can only go one way out of, of that area, so that's where they would be coming through our neighborhood, which kids do play at, on the streets and stuff. Sorry, I'm nervous. Um, yeah, and the privacy thing is a really big issue, because like my husband said, we have two windows in our, um. Master bedroom, and they look directly into where would be the, um, apartment complex, looking into our room, which we were looking to, you know, could see in there. And then the grandbabies that come over all the time, um, swimming, playing, whatever, just having that big building, just kind of is gonna be a eyesore, I think. And if you are trying to do like the general or the mixed business. Um, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what to say, um, I just don't like the idea at all, but, um, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing, unless anybody has anything else. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Um, applicant, would you like, like to come back up and address any of the comments that were made or add anything else?
Hi, uh, Carolyn Pasposel, I'm with Housing Foundation for Sarpy County. The concerns about it being an apartment complex, um, it is one building, and the, all of the commercial is going to face Fort Crook Road. So the lot is there, and I apologize, I won't, anyway, if you can't hear me, let me know. Um, it's going to face Fort Crook, the commercial faces Fort Crook Road. Have you had a chance to look at the pictures of it or anything?
No.
Okay, can I, can I show those to you when we're done?
Please.
Okay, great, um, so.
Or we could bring them up.
Angela can put it, bring it up.
Bring them up, no.
That'd be even better. Thank you, Angela. Uh, the apartments themselves are a mix of studios, ones and twos, the ideas behind it is that we can have. Um, at this point, there aren't any affordable, um, income restrictions put on it. Uh, with Housing Foundation for Sarpy County, our goal is to provide affordable housing in general, that's workforce housing, so people that are. That are working, that are going to, going to their jobs every day, um. I'm sure, it, it's most people are gonna move into every day, we're not looking for, um, anything that's a high-end product, uh, what we're putting out is a, is a decent and affordable apartment. Um, we don't have the exact on what the rents are gonna be as of right now, because we're working out the construction cost still. Uh, but the idea behind it is that they are low-income affordable, they're affordable rents to anyone that needs it without subsidy. Um, at this time, we've put together, the, what you see on the screen is the front of the building that faces Fort Crook. Can you show them the north? Cause you're on the north side of it, right?
Correct.
So what you'd, it's to be the north elevation, I think it's the one you just passed. Is that the north? That's the north, so what, that would be what is facing towards, towards where your house is. Um, we haven't done anything as far as we've provided, uh, what we expect would be for final, um, for final materials that are used. Uh, so that we have an idea of what's there. Um, there is, there is space between your lot and theirs, I know it's not a lot, uh, but there is an existing, is there an existing fence there, isn't there?
We, we've got retaining walls to.
We, we, we can't, we have to have them on a mic if they're gonna talk and the public hearing is closed, so sorry. Okay, then it's fine, so we're, we're more than willing to work with the neighborhood, we don't wanna put something in the neighborhood that takes away from it. That's why we're trying to get away. Word, what you have there, obviously now, um, is a completely different product than what we're putting in. I will tell you that, um, with the Fort Crook Road Plan, this is consistent with what it's asked for, and this is kind of what follows down. According to that plan, would follow down the whole road, um, so this is kind of the first one that's being done in that direction. Uh, I'm more than happy to sit with you, and we can talk about everything that we're doing, and I apologize if that didn't get done beforehand, we tried to reach out to people and it didn't work out very well, so. But, um, if you have any questions, we're done, I'm more than happy to answer them for you, especially before this goes to another city council or anything.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, commissioners, questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions for applicant, I guess, in terms of site plan and some of the concerns we've heard. I'm supportive of infill development, obviously, the three or four-story building, I assume while you're putting it farther east on the land is based on the topography, so you can. Get that first floor into the hill, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, yep.
What's the repercussions if you were to flip your plan a little bit and put more parking on the east side and move the building further towards the, the west?
Further towards the west, I think we had.
He's, he's lining up the driveways.
Yeah.
Correct, so, uh, Public Works requires that the drives be lined up with that one drive on the south. Cause there's existing driveways along Pleasant View.
Okay. So if you take that drawing.
Easement as well.
If you take that drawing where you've got a middle row of parking on the west side. If instead you flip that and put it on the. East side, I think your building would still end up between the two parking areas, or?
Yeah, did you notice there's a big O P P D easement there in the corner?
I did not.
Big triangle is right there, so they can't get. You see that?
That was.
Big hash area in the corner, they can't build that.
That easement.
Okay. Yeah, one of the challenges with, with working with the site was that, that easement and, and working with the topography to get kind of a. Split level commercial on the bottom and residential on the, on the second floor.
And is that, I guess, one more question, on the northeast corner, is that where the garbage dumpsters are?
Uh, currently, yes, um.
Something we could get down, probably. Closer to the drain area on the southwest instead.
We could look at that, um. And that would be a, it'd be an enclosed, um, trash receptacle, but we can, we could look at moving that around maybe somewhere else on site.
Again, I'll defer to maybe the neighbors if they wanna chat with you after, but I would think they'd maybe rather not have that right on their back line. And then for the. The Myers that came out, first of all, thanks for coming out. From a planning perspective, again, the infill, for a lot of reasons, makes sense for Bellevue, and unfortunately. Uh, whether you like it or not, if you go down Child's Road where they built the new school. Uh, they plugged those apartments in there, I don't remember if those are three or four stories tall, again, right next to neighborhood. That might have been a little different where the topography of the houses was the opposite direction of yours. Again, if you go down to thirty-six and three seventy, just south of there. And slightly to the west, they plugged in two apartment buildings, which again, I think are both three-story on the edge, but. Uh, housing next to it. So from a planning and zoning perspective, it's not unusual, from our perspective, you try to get housing next to housing, farther away from retail, this kind of does. The blend whereby doing retail on first floor and facing Fort Crook, you're not gonna hopefully see that, you'll. Certainly see some of the cars maybe daytime on the front end, but it's mostly gonna be the residents there after the, the business hours, so. From a planning perspective, this makes sense, um, but I guess I would ask maybe meet with Carolyn and the. The engineer there afterwards, and maybe talk about the site plan and see if there's specific things we can maybe do to make it better. I guess another question I forgot to ask you while you were up there, Trevor. You know, I don't see the, on the east side, is there a certain amount and the north side, I guess, is there a certain amount of? Any berms or trees or things we can put in there that?
Yes, there's, there's a landscape buffer yard that is shown on the landscape plan. It's along the majority of the north and it's along the entire east side.
So maybe again, if you had a bigger picture or something, you could show them how wide is that?
Right.
What's all gonna go in there? That would maybe help alleviate some concerns.
That's a, a question if I piggyback on that with, uh, for staff or the applicant is. I'm, I'm having a little bit of a hard time, um, judging the relative, um, elevations. From the paving area, parking lot area up to the top of yours versus the excavation and then the landscaping top. The top of the landscaping, once it matures, will be how high compared to that building?
As far as to the building, I'm not sure. I'd have to look at that in an elevation view. I know the, the landscaping we have proposed around the perimeter would be a, be like a six-foot tall. Uh, kinda screening.
And the retaining wall is?
The, the existing retaining wall offsite. I'm seeing a. That might be ten feet higher than our property. I'm seeing a ten sixty-five on our elevation plan up here in this northeast corner.
So, right from the get-go, perhaps maybe sixteen feet, give or take.
Yes, potentially.
Okay, thanks. I, one of the concerns I've got and, and I'm appreciative of infill and appreciative of the type of housing and it's always tough to have, uh, happen is that, um. Sometimes landscaping, uh, in between the two pieces of property can, can be pretty helpful and, and. It looks like to me already that you're probably sixteen feet gets you up to the second story of, of the building being sheltered from, uh, residential view. Uh, I would, I would make note that, uh, this is probably the first time I can remember that, uh, we've had a building that's going to, uh, actually shade. Uh, a residential area by its construction because it's slightly west. And so this is a little unusual aside from, I think, the Bellevue University Building, when it was built throws a pretty long shadow. Uh, I don't know if that's good or bad. It saves some energy, but, but I would make that observation. But I think we're within a story of, um, property being isolated just by the proposal to date. And I'm assuming homeowners can come back and do something on their property with fast-growing trees if they were so inclined, at least for the summer part as well. Thank you. Thank you.
So if we're going to have conversation with the neighbors and the applicant on changing the site plan, how are we getting a site plan approval tonight?
I think what has been described is fairly minor. Um, really, the only thing I'm hearing is possible relocation of the dumpster enclosure, which I think can be discussed prior to it moving forward to city council. We typically don't like to see it right along the frontage, so Trevor, I don't know if it's possible to look. You have a patch of landscaping up against the retention pond on the northwest side. Is that a potential from an engineering standpoint to just move it from one corner to the other on the north side? Or does that, I don't, I, maybe I'm putting you on the spot. I don't know if you can make an answer to me right now, but. I would probably look to that area before I would look down by the street.
OPBD, a lot of them put in the easement or not either, I don't know.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that, um, just based on first impressions. That would be the main concern is that OPBD easement, but. We can, we can certainly look into it.
The other advantage to the, uh, consideration of moving the trash, if, uh, you know, seriously take a look at it, is the, uh, noise problem when they pick up trash.
Right, yeah.
In, in the morning, if it was more to the northwest and northeast, that might help the residential area out a little bit. Otherwise, we'd have to comply with the noise standards for pickup times.
I guess my suggestion is if planning commission is okay with the overall use and overall layout, make a recommendation contingent upon. Relocation of the trash enclosure.
Mr. Meyer, back up.
Did you wanna talk again, sir?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
We need to vote on that.
Hold on.
Need to vote on that.
Yeah.
You wait to vote that we. Diana was not expecting another motion.
We can do a roll call vote if necessary. That's okay. We can do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. Lassenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Go ahead and come in and please state your name for the record.
Yes, of course. Ryan Meyer, once again, live at eight oh two North Sixth Street. Um, thank you very much for letting me speak. It'll be real quick. I wanted to thank you guys very much for listening to us. One thing I really didn't think about was the traffic that will have to go around. I'm not gonna re-go through it again, but being a residential area and our homes are built. I think a lot of mine at least was built in nineteen sixty, so there's not a lot of sidewalks. So you're having extra people, eh, extra cars going through this area with not a lot of sidewalks. I believe it was two or three years ago. We had a child die from a car accident, hit in the road a few blocks away. Um, it's just another consideration that. If we're gonna have to add concrete, well, that's an extra expense. Um, I'm not really interested in paying for it, but if it's something that needs to be done, it needs to be done. So that, that's all I have. I thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Before I do that, there's anybody else? Last chance. Okay, we'll close the hearing. All right, uh, what are the wishes of the commission?
If there are no other, uh, comments from, uh, commissioners. I'd like to, uh, recommend a request, approval of the request for his own lot, two of the Minkie's second addition from BG to BU for the purpose of. Mixed, uh, MU to the purpose of mixed-use development with, uh, site plan included as well and a provision to, uh. This is contingent upon relocation of the, um, trash from the northeast side of the proposal to another location, preferably northwest, but, uh, they will work with staff.
Mr. Jacobson, is that based upon conformance of zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations in the Fort Creek Road twenty forty plan and, uh, perceived negative impact on the surrounding area?
It is. Thank you very much.
In that case, I would second your motion.
Thank you.
Takes a team.
Takes a village.
Motion carried.
Okay, that item will go in front of the city council for public hearing on May seventh. So another opportunity for the public to come speak. So I would encourage you guys to take some time with Carolyn. Talk to her now. Okay, our third public hearing is item three C, request to amend section seven dot zero four dot zero three seven. City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding billboard signs. Applicant, city of Bellevue. Tammy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, really what we are proposing, uh, to change the ordinance is a couple of words. Um, currently, the ordinance requires that a billboard cannot be placed within a hundred and fifty-foot radius of a residential zone. So that means any property that is zoned residentially has that one hundred and fifty-foot buffer. Um, what we are finding is, um. Uh, as of late, there's a, again, a higher demand for billboards and as we're getting these applications, we're, we're looking at a few things and. We have a lot of single-family residences that are non-conforming, that abut some of our major corridors. Fort Creek one, Fort Creek Road being a primary one, um, Galvin Road, Harland Drive, there's several areas. So you have existing neighborhoods that have probably been there at least forty years or better. And you will sometimes have a row of homes that are built in a, a BG zoning district or commercial zoning district. And that's because, um, prior to twenty twelve, we had something called pyramidal zoning. So basically, if it was allowed in, you know, BG, that also allowed all of the residential uses. It also allowed all the lesser uses as well. We changed that in twenty twelve, so we made a number of homes non-conforming. Couple of things with that. Um, you know, I look at neighborhoods such as Nob Hill off of Fort Creek, right over in this area. That we, uh, just talked about in our last public hearing. Those residences, I don't believe are going anywhere. They are in an established residential neighborhood, but yet a number of those homes are zoned BG. So under the current code, you could have somebody that comes in and puts a digital billboard, um, less than a hundred and fifty feet from a residence. I don't believe that's the intent of the ordinance. I believe the intent of the ordinance is to have a buffer from any residential use. So that's kind of what the change that we're proposing, just to clean it up for staff, um, so that we could implement the regulation that there's that hundred and fifty-foot. Uh, buffer, that radius from any residential use, not just a residential zone. So I would welcome any conversation, feedback, input on that.
And the use would be the, sorry.
Nope, you go ahead.
Closest boundary.
I do need to open the public hearing. You guys care if I do that quick? We have a public hearing and then we're done? Okay, I open public hearing. Seeing nobody here, we'll close the public hearing.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, that's all I was gonna say is we need to go to public.
Yep. Go ahead, exactly.
So the residential use isn't the house, it's whatever the boundary is for that.
Correct. It would be the property line. So what we would look at is the property line of that residential lot. Which is what we use now. We currently use the property li- line of the lot.
Would this affect any existing billboards that are already up? That you know of?
I don't think so. Um, I guess we'd have to take a closer look at that. What it would do is if there were some, it would make them non-conforming, so they're fine to exist. But if anything happens where they're torn down, um, they would want to enlarge, anything like that, they wouldn't be able to do that unless they conformed. So I, I'm trying to think, Angela, I don't, I don't think there are.
There's a billboard on the old DJ's dugout building and there's a farmhouse across the street. I don't know how much a hundred and fifty feet would be though, but it's damn close.
Twenty-fifth and Cornhusker.
To your point, it doesn't require them to be out of business. They just are non-conforming at that point.
Correct.
And then more of a, along the same lines, are there any applications right now that are pending that if we make this decision tonight?
No. Um, we've had several billboard permits get approved in the last six to twelve months, but none in this situation. We're just. As we look at these, we're just anticipating that could be the scenario. Cuz we've got some that are pretty close.
You've got it there, Angela. You've got it. I don't know if we got it.
Yeah, there's a billboard on that corner on the north.
I'm sure there's gonna be a half dozen examples around town.
Right.
They can repair them if they're existing, they just can't.
Yeah, you just can't. If you, if you want to enlarge it, if it. Comes down in a tornado, you can't replace it unless it is conforming. But it, yeah, to Mr. Ackley's point, it wouldn't prevent them from continuing business.
Correct me if I'm wrong on this, uh, staff, uh, it's, it seems like with the proposals that you're advancing that this offers some additional protection to the residential areas because of brightness.
Correct. Um, yeah, that's one concern and like I said, I think the overall intent of the ordinance is to do that. It just isn't clearly written that way right now.
Actually, I bet we'd have a lot of signs that fit within this. As I'm looking at, that's twenty-fifth and Cornhusker. Again, it's to the lot line where the residential begins, so really it's, you're measuring just across the road and you hit it, right? I'm not opposed to it. I just think we'll have a fair number of non-conforming structures. Which, as we convert from. Putting coverings on billboards, the electronic, maybe that's a good idea. Having non-conforming to second-guess some of those.
And the technology is different, definitely moving to digital. That's what everybody wants to do. The bigger, the brighter, the better.
I see there's a new one going up on Highway seventy-five as I was coming here.
Correct. Correct. You also see two on Highway three seventy.
Is the one on seventy-five the one that was before us?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
The one where we said we're not gonna approve your plan with that billboard?
Yeah, that one.
Wonder if a new plan will come back soon.
Has not yet.
Okay, any other discussion or I'd be prepared to make a motion? Hearing none, I would make a motion to approve of the amendment as presented.
Second.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, and that item will go to city council for public hearing on May seventh, twenty twenty-four. All right, next, uh, for A, comprehensive plan updates from staff.